And our subject here is the superintendent's search process.
I'd like to move approval of the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Second thought.
All right, and then trustee Kuziak, your vote?
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes, so that is five zero. We have approved the agenda. We have a lot of background here, stuff. This isn't the regular thing.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, we did approval of the agenda. We now, public comment instructions. At a special board meeting, the public may comment on items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Education, which are being discussed at this meeting. The Board requests that individuals who would like to address the Board complete a request to speak form and submit it to the Board prior to the start of the agenda item. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the Board decides otherwise. The Board shall limit the total time for public comment on each agenda item to thirty minutes. With the consensus of the Board, the Board President may increase or decrease the time allowed for public input and/or the amount of time for individual speakers. All right, our second item here is report discussions, action items. So we have our discussion here and action. The Board will meet with leadership associates, which are here, search firm advisors to discuss the search process. And our, there's nothing about a timeline here. Okay, motion needed, oh, to approve the schedule as presented or amended if changes are to be made. And as part of the packet here, we have a timeline, proposed timeline listed.
So Dolly, what I'm imagining we're doing is we're going to be talking for the next how many hours? And along the way, if we make any changes, we'll note that, and then we make the motion to reflect those changes.
All right.
We have nothing to motion at this point.
Okay.
We'll come back to that, right?
Great. Okay, so we are gonna go recess to closed session now? No.
No.
I think what we're supposed to do here.
Okay, that's the next thing on the line.
We're doing this now.
So we need to, a motion on the timeline itself. We need to discuss the timeline.
It's not what Mike was saying.
Yeah.
Let's hear from you guys. I'm sorry. We're all new at this.
That's okay. You guys are doing a great job. So first of all, I just want to thank you for choosing Leadership Associates. I'm really excited to be here, and this is my colleague, Dr. Blanca Travacas-Gavasos. That's right. And so, and she was online on Zoom the last, at our last meeting, so did you want to just say anything to them first before we get started?
It's really a pleasure.
Thank you. It's really a pleasure to have the opportunity to work with you. As I mentioned, when I was online, I have heard about your district for a very long time. Having served with Parveen on the AXA Board and now serving also with Raoul on the AXA Board, I have heard of just the amazing things that you are doing for students and their families. And so it really, when this came up, I wanted to do this. And so Donald and I have worked together before, and so it's really a privilege to be able to do that. I do have my first granddaughter, who lives up in Northern California in Santa Rosa, so I go by here often. And so I tend to do a lot of work in this area because my little prized possession is just a little further up north. So it's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you. So we have quite a bit to go over today. A lot of it, you've already done. And I'm just amazed because I've never worked with a district that had so much of this done already. So Amy and Gary and, oh my God, and Lavender, all of you guys together have just done an amazing job so far, and we haven't even started. So, but you guys have started, actually. So I just want to commend you on that. So I'm gonna go through the outline. We're gonna talk about a couple of things in terms of the housekeeping, like the board liaison. And then we're gonna confirm a couple of things, email addresses. Then we're gonna talk about the input that we are going to get from our stakeholders and who do you want us to talk to? And you guys have already started that already. We're gonna talk about the position description. And then the online survey. And then we're gonna get into the timeline, and so we're going through a lot of this. Well, through the timeline, we'll hit some of these things. And then also talk about the publication dates, and then the input session dates, as well as interviewing, and then a location for the interview. And then we'll get into the candidate recruitment, talk a little bit about the parameters. And then also, one of the things that we'll have to discuss is the salary. And then I have some comparables. So I have that already for you. And then we'll get into the input from the Board in terms of the qualities and characteristics that you'd like to see in the next superintendent, and some of the strengths and challenges. And then, and I see that you've already sent me some stuff already. So it's just a matter of putting all of that into a format that we work with, you know, in our organization. So with that being said, I'm gonna go back to the beginning and just kind of take care of a couple of things first. So in terms of the board liaison, spokesperson for the Board, that is trustee Gary and trustee Lavender. Is there, or is there somebody else who's gonna be the spokesperson for the Board? So if we have a question around something, and then we need to contact somebody right away.
Sarah and Gary.
Sarah and Gary? Got it.
You and Gary that were the spokesperson with the?
Well, y'all were the contacts when we were doing it.
That's right.
Suppose the question is going forward.
Right.
Who's gonna liaison with the Board? Yeah, so it's.
I was gonna say, if it's, if it was an issue of needing somebody who can like be available to respond very quickly.
That's right.
But not that person. So I don't know if I'd be the right person for that.
I'm in a uniquely, unique situation where I'm actually pretty respondable right now, but I defer to the rest.
I'm pretty available as well, so.
Okay, so who would you like for me to put down as the spokesperson?
I would like to volunteer.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah.
And then who else? So I got.
Backup, could we have you as a backup?
Okay, you got Lavender. And I got Michael. Okay, I'm gonna move you guys up here.
I think from that perspective, I will give you my personal cell phone.
Okay.
Great.
The text is usually my best way to get a hold me and say like, we need you.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I just need to confirm that Amy, you've been getting everything from Penny correct, so there's not been a problem at all. And so I got your email address, I got your phone number, your extension, all that good stuff, already. So I might need another number, and I can get that offline. Okay? So I have everyone's email addresses. I got that from the webpage, and everything is correct. Okay. Now I'm gonna turn it over to my colleague. You want to talk about the input from the Board?
Yes, and thank you, Gary, for providing us the information. Yes.
I forwarded that to them since we had worked on it. Did you guys?
Yes, thank you so much. I saw that. Appreciate that, Gary.
Yes, so thank you for, before I throw you under the bus, right? So thank you for sending that, and we're going to be asking you for some information shortly, because you've probably, since the time that you created that, you may have had some additional thoughts, and so want to make sure that we gather those today. And the questions that we're going to be asking you about the superintendent and about the district are the exact same questions that we are going to be asking of all the educational partners. So there's no difference with what we're asking you today to what we're going to ask of every one of your educational partners when we meet with them. So I want to make sure that you are aware of that. And what we do with that input, that we gather, both the input that we gather through our meetings, whether they be online or in person, and also from the online survey, all of that information is summarized, and we use that information in some very impactful ways. The first is that we use that information to draft the position description. And so the position description is not a cookie cutter. It is not what you typically would see, for example, in an HR office that has a standard job description. This position description is really tailored based on the information that we get from all of your educational partners and you summarized. And then we provide that to you in a draft form, give you an opportunity to make any changes to that. And then once you approve that, then we put that online. And we not only put it online on our website, but then we also will provide it to Amy so that she can see that it is placed on your website as well. So, and we also mention that to your educational partners when we meet with them, that the input that they are providing is valuable for exactly those same reasons. And then secondly, we use that same information to create draft interview questions. And so that will be reflected, what you're looking for in that position description will be reflected in those interview questions. And then lastly, well, what we use, once we get that, we summarize it, provide you with a summary report. And the summary report summarizes both what we gathered in person and online, and also that online survey. And you get everything. You get all of that data. Everything that we collected, you will receive. And then, once the superintendent is hired, we give that information to that person as well, the summary, and also all of the data, so that that individual can come in and know, hmm, these are some of the, appear to be some of the concerns that they had. Although we're not asking for concerns, you will see some things that people ask that they want to make sure that superintendent has those skills or experiences, et cetera, and it gives them an idea of what the priorities are for the different educational partners and the Board. So very impactful. Yes, please.
I'm curious to know, as you're leading these sessions, how do you direct the conversation to something, I don't want it to be all roses and it's wonderful, but how do you direct it towards like talking about the qualities of the superintendent rather than like specific gripes one might have with the district? And really direct it to sort of the opportunities of what?
We, first of all, we let them know what the question is going to be, and it's gonna be the same thing, that what are the qualities, characteristics, experiences, skills that you're looking for? And that's really what we redirect that because the past is past, and you really can't change that. What you can do is use that, those experiences, et cetera, to help kind of formulate what the future will be, or impact what the future will be. So we ask that question. The second question we ask is, what are the strengths of the district? What is it that you're very proud of? Because as we're talking to candidates, they want to know, and so we tell them, oh, this is, you know, the community's really proud of this, or, you know, the educational partners are very proud of these aspects. And then we also ask them, because not everything is rosy, that would not be realistic at all. What are the challenges? Because we all have challenges. Every single school district has challenges. So what are the challenges of the district? And again, that helps the new superintendent, when they come in, know, okay, I need to start thinking about, I need to formulate some plans, I need to be discussing with cabinet, with staff, with parents, with the community about these issues, and see if we can look at some ways that we can address those. So it, it's, those are the three questions that we ask. And so we do redirect them because, and we do say, okay, let's focus on what these skills are. We also have thirty minutes scheduled for those three questions. We have thirty minutes scheduled, and so we really focus on keeping them on time as well, because we're respectful of the next group that we are meeting with.
Sorry.
No, don't, this is, this is a.
We're okay. This is what it's meant to be. You know, Amy's used Thought Exchange a lot. Is that something, a tool that we'll be using to collect data as we're interacting with the different stakeholders? I know Thought Exchange is a really robust way to, contemporaneous notes are basically being developed by the stakeholders there. I just want to make sure that people's information is, you know, grabbed, and then, of course, you're able to synthesize it and provide the analysis that you need to provide. I'm just curious to know what.
We do, is we, as you're giving us that information, we type that in. And we also clarify, because sometimes people will say, well, I'm trying to say, and then we'll say, hmm, you know, is this, does this capture it? And they can say, no, I think, I think there's a piece that you're missing, and clarify. So again, it's whether we're online or in person, it's very interactive in that sense. And then when people hear one thing, it triggers another thought, and so it just is almost a free flow, and we're, and I tell them, I'm typing as fast as I can, so be patient with me, you know? And they're very good about that.
To Mike's point, since there is an online survey, can people fill out the online surveys? Well, they're at, can that be an option for them, like, hey, we're writing stuff down, but you can also fill?
Oh, we encourage them to do both of them.
Right.
Because the online survey goes into greater depth. And so we encourage them at every session, just because you're here doesn't mean that you can't do the online survey. We want to encourage you to complete the online survey. And we also encourage them to share that information and that link with others that may not be parents in the community, that may not, you know, receive communications in a traditional way. Because that link really is for, and what we say to them is, anyone that has a stake in the future of this district should be filling out that online survey, so. Your, Mike is not on.
I do want to say that we try to create an environment where they're comfortable in seeing what they feel is important to them. We don't want to control that.
And we don't write any names down, because it's not the names that are important. It really is the information that they're providing that's important. And so we don't write any names down at all. And we also discourage Board members or staff members from being in, for example, a group that they don't necessarily pertain to. Because we want people to be open and honest, and that's how we get the best information. Great. So, let me just. So for your online surveys, what languages are the languages? And we don't have a hundred percent of them, but we do have predominant languages. What languages would you want us to make available?
Spanish and simplified Chinese.
You said Spanish, and what was the other one? I'm sorry.
Simplified Chinese.
You said simplified Chinese.
Sorry, that's great. I just, can we go back to the first bullet point, or were you going to come back to that about?
Yeah, I was gonna go back to that one.
Okay.
We're not done with that. That's kind of going to close that for us. So one of the amazing things that Amy did that we appreciate greatly is that she's already brainstormed some of the education partners. And so you have a sheet in here with some suggestions? And really, thank you so much. You've saved us a lot of time. But are there any groups, you know, please take time to look at this, and then are there any groups that we need to add?
Yeah, I have three general buckets. I think we need to have a carve-out for special education. That's about fifteen percent of our student population, and I know a lot of the parents and guardians there want to be engaged. I think we also should be mindful about the neurodiversity within that parent group, and think about how we do the engagement, whether it's online, in person, and just be open to how we engage with that community. Something that could be trickier, but I think, yes.
So do you have a special education group?
We do. We have an affinity group, but I think you should add that to the affinity.
Yeah, we do. I think, you know, I can work directly with SPED staff to make sure that that's getting out to people. I don't think their information, they don't necessarily have the most recent, they don't know how to get to a lot of parents.
But here's the, sorry, because of the timeline, it may not be at a regular meeting. It will need to be pushed out in a different manner, so I will totally take that on and make sure that the appropriate people are invited.
Amy, I'm just noting that the last SPED parent meeting I went to, there were six of us there. If you count me, three of us were parents. If you don't count me, two of them were parents. So I wanted to just make sure it gets out to a lot of people.
I would just say to that effect that Amy has the address and the numbers and the names of all the people who are involved in those groups. I'd really like to filter it through her.
Fair enough.
And can I also just clarify, because it's my understanding that these groups listed are invitation-only. It's not open to everybody. The community forum meetings would be open to everybody. So that the SPED Parent Advisory Committee would be invitation-only for those parents in that specific group, just like our Parent Leadership Council members would be specific to that group. And then there's also community meetings, and the online survey will be pushed out through all channels as well. So we'll have an opportunity to fill out the online survey as well.
Can I just, I have two other buckets. We're an unincorporated community. That means that we have overlapping jurisdictions that fall within our school district, and it makes it just really confusing sometimes. I would recommend, and maybe it's a different type of engagement on your part, I do think we should, I don't know if it's Board members or just leadership, Hard, the Sheriff's Office, Alameda County, and CB San at a minimum. I think that's a good perspective for us to have in mind, because this superintendent's going to have to navigate what it means to be an unincorporated community. Sorry, Alameda County?
I would be specific, the supervisor's office.
Yeah, I would say all the supervisors. That's my deference, because they're all.
They're not in our district. I would not think that that would.
Fair enough. I have a different opinion about the role of supervisors. I think they're all our government, but if it makes sense, just going to supervisor Miley's office. But Hard is our local Parks Department and Park and Recreation, and CB San is our local sanitation district. Yep.
And Amy has all the contact information that you would need for any of those groups.
Yeah. And then my kind of last one, I know we're going to have an open community forum, and I appreciate, Amy, like, this is very internal-looking to like the stakeholders that make a school district operate on a daily basis, and like who makes up our, who we are. There might be some more specific targeting we want to do with like the chamber, rotary, even clergy, just to get sort of the general vibe in Castro Valley. I know that might sound kind of, I, there's a disconnect between our school community and the broader Castro Valley community, and I throw that out there just merely as suggestions, because I think that those are people who vote in our elections, they vote for bond funds, partial taxes, and whatever mechanisms might exist could be helpful. That's all. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we do want your education partners, and so the groups that you've mentioned are very traditional.
I would say the chamber is important. I agree with that. I don't know how, I mean, we have our community alliance that has a lot of those members on there. So how might we engage the members on the community alliance that represent a lot of the groups that you're referring to? And that way, it's not, I mean, we have a short timeline, so. So I would suggest we do community alliance instead of the groups you mentioned and the chamber, because it's a fair group. For the clergy, it would be community alliance. So the community alliance encompasses a wide array of community members that represent a swath of our. that represent a swath of our community.
There's also the, a lot of the same people are in the ambassadors as well. I would contact them if we don't get them from one of the other groups, the ambassadors.
That group is meant to be sort of advice to the superintendent on, you know, fundraising, opportunities with our facilities, just sort of folks maybe who are not connected to the everyday life of our district, but our community leaders.
Amy has a list of everybody on there.
So I think those are good additions. I would also suggest in, under the umbrella of affinity groups and parent affinity groups, that we reach out to the Music Parents Society, add them to the list. And also add, the Music Parents Society. That, that group comprises parents of kids in all the middle schools, the high school. And then I would also suggest that we reach out to the boosters, the booster parents from the high school. The sports parents.
Sports people.
Any other, other groups?
The only other one that I can think of that Parveen's been really engaged with is the Women's Club. Is the Castro Valley Women's Club.
So I'm going to cover the second bullet because I've kind of hopped around a little bit tying things together. But one of the things that component of the, the position description is, is also a description of the community and the district. And you have information on the website, and so we'll look at that. And then also if there's something that you use in promotional materials for recruiting staff, employees, et cetera, that might be another place that we could, if you want to get that to us. And, and again, you'll have a chance to take a look at this. We'll put that in there. And then you, board members, will have a, an opportunity to review that and make any changes before we actually put it on the websites. And we already have dates for the edcal. And just to, to let you know that we did already put out the, the position online, both on our website. And I just want to let you know that once it was pushed out, within the next several hours, we received at least a dozen requests. And that's just from our distribution list. We also requested of, of both Sarah and Gary the authorization to be able to post on the AXA online just because of the short timeline. Because otherwise we would have to wait and we would not get the full two, two weeks of it in print. So right now the position is already on AXA online. It's also out on our website as well, and it's been sent out to our distribution list. So the, the dates that we have are for the AXA edcal in print.
I just want to say that once that went out, and I'm just on, on the webpage right now, there were, just from that posting, 15 folks that requested applications already.
And I've already gotten two calls on it. So it is going to be very popular, yes.
I apologize.
No, don't, please don't apologize.
To go back to salary range, we didn't really, we're not we're going to come to, okay.
Yes. So I want to make sure. I think we've gotten everything. So
We're going to get to that.
Are we ready to talk about that?
So let me hit number six. I'm kind of just going to go in order. So we talked about the posting. One of the things that you let us know is that April the 7th, we're looking at input sessions for April the 7th and April the 8th. We know that April the 7th, that's your first day back spring break. So we might want to start the 8th.
Maybe you want to prioritize other non-school associated stakeholders on that day.
True.
Maybe, yeah.
That would work too. And then we could probably take the 8th and maybe fill it in with some of our school folks.
Yeah, and I, I would recommend, I mean, since Amy has all the contacts and knows all the folks, that she provides some guidance, how to reach out in advance to let
Okay, possibly bring in nine school folks on the 7th. Okay.
And then we're going to be working with Amy also on which groups would be better served by us being in person? Which groups would be better served by being, meeting with us online? And which groups maybe need a spattering of, of both? You know, an opportunity for both. Because both Donald and I will, will be available. And then we also will need to schedule that, the community input, the open forum, so that we're both available at that time as well. So with your blessing, we're going to rely on Amy's expertise to guide us on that.
I think that's best.
Yes, please.
Yes, Amy's great at this.
Yes, please, Amy.
And typically we had an open session where I'm in person and then you can be online. That's easier. So there's no need for the two of us to be
Right, right. Because we, and also I'm fluent in Spanish. And so I will work with the, the Spanish speakers. And, and so I could, if, if that group is preferable in person, then I can, I can meet with them in person. And so we just need your guidance and we're going to trust your guidance on that. Rely, not just, not trust, but rely on your, is the most accurate word. Rely on, on your judgment, your expertise on that. And, and then we'll make ourselves available however best works for those groups on, on those two days.
So, so that brings us to, so the deadline for the applications will still stand as April the 21st. And so during April and May, we will be doing our vetting of all the applications or the applicants. So that will bring us to when we will come before you to present our candidates. We usually tier them, as I said before, tier one, tier two, tier three. And so we're looking at that date as being May 2nd.
Can you just remind us your tiers again? And, yeah.
So the tier one are these people who fit every quality that we think would be a great fit for Castro Valley. Tier two, not quite there. Sometimes we will have a candidate that's not, that's not quite one, but they're not two. And they may be in the middle. And we'll say they're one A, one B, or something like that. But typically they meet all the requirements that you have set forth in terms of the qualities and characteristics that you'd like to see. Tier two, they might be missing a few things here and there. And then tier three are candidates that basically we feel do not material that you set forth. Or may not be as qualified yet.
I think I know the answer to this question, but I'd just like to ask. It sounds to me then, no matter how many applications that you receive, you're going to share all of them with us, correct?
Yes, yes. And, and if, if I may talk about that, what, what we do is after it closes, then we begin the vetting process immediately. And so we're talking to references and what I call non-references. You know, people that are not on their reference list, but some that, that either Donald or I or our colleagues know, someone who knows of their experiences, their previous experiences. Once we finish that, then as Don said, we, we put them in those tiers. And before we meet with you, we will give you, and we'll give you ample time. Typically we'll try to do that also over a weekend because some of you may work. So we'll also make sure that it covers a weekend. And we give you a, a link to a portal online. And then you see absolutely everything that we see in the application. There's not anything that you don't, don't see. And, and then when we meet with you, then you can say, hmm, you know, you have this person at this tier. Can you just tell me why they're in that tier and not in this tier? And then we will share with you why they're in the tier that, that they're in. Because as we all know, and that's really the reason that you, one of the many reasons, but a, a strong reason for hiring a search firm is not everything that you see on paper is, is, tells the whole story. And, and that's really part of it is we're trying to get the rest of the story.
So just a follow up then to that question. When we come to this meeting on the 2nd to review the candidates, is that when, yeah? We will all have had a couple of days to kind of go through all the applications ourselves.
Yes, you'll, you'll have a number of days.
Well, we know when we're reviewing through that portal, how you've tiered them at that point.
Not, not when they get the portal. You'll, when we meet with you, that's when we go over that. Because that, that then gives you the opportunity to ask the questions and, and for us to give you what we've found.
Okay, thank you.
Give you the information.
You know, this has been too easy so far, so I want to throw a monkey wrench into this right now. And that is
They wanted my tiers before they saw
Really, I, I, yes, I've never given them the tiers because then you're, you're going at it fresh, through fresh eyes and not through our eyes. And it isn't until, you know, we're, we're sharing with you the why they're in, in the tiers, then it, it kind of broadens that.
The monkey wrench is that I have a grandson who's going to turn one on May 2nd. And I'll be in South Dakota. Can we, I leave on, on April 30th and I'll be back on the 6th. We adjust that slightly or is that a major problem? I'd like to be
I think, I think I was the problem, but I'm not sure.
Sorry, you're leaving on the 30th, what time? In the morning or?
I don't know.
So we would have till the 29th, you're saying, I'm hearing.
Yeah, the 29th, great.
I'm not here from the, on the 27th, 30th.
Got it.
When are you back, Gary?
The 6th.
Can we him with a remote participation?
All right.
Yeah, we could, we could also do that remotely.
Yeah, so Amy's saying
Remotely, if that would, I mean, if it has to be that way, that's fine. I'm, I'm okay with that if
You'll, you'll see the same things. You'll, you'll see and hear exactly the same things that your, your colleagues
Did it, so
Yeah, I, I did it. And I also have a monkey wrench as well. I realized I'm out of town on the 10th when I looked at the calendar. On the 10th, and that's when we're supposed to be doing interviews.
You
I know, right, sorry.
Oh, you're just traveling.
It's a short trip. I'll be gone the 9th at 5:00 PM Sunday morning.
It's a Sunday morning.
We do it Sunday, that is Mother's Day.
I don't think we should do another Sunday, honestly.
Could you do a Monday?
What does that Monday, the 12th look like for you?
I can take a day off of work.
So
You're gone.
So it's Monday, the
12th.
12th, okay.
And you're gone the 8th.
I'll be online on the 2nd. Is that what we're doing?
Well, I would think that we need to check on dates. I'm so sorry, y'all. I, I, I looked at my calendar and it wasn't on the right one.
Amy is unhappy with it.
I know, I'm sorry, Amy.
Look at her.
I, I messed up. I, I blame the jet lag.
That's okay. Gary, you said your grandson though tur, is the party on the 2nd or is the party on the Saturday?
I'm sorry?
For your grandson, is the party on the Saturday or the Friday?
It's on the, on the 30th. April 30th leave, come back on the 6th.
Okay, but I don't want the, you have to be online if it's during a birthday party.
Oh.
No. It's not on Friday.
I can do that, I mean, it's
So is it Friday, Friday's okay? Or could we do Saturday morning?
Because what time would we do that?
Oh, but then everybody's got to come in on a Saturday morning.
I've got your views on that day.
Time is it scheduled for? Because there's a two hour difference here.
Yeah, it's not yet. It's not scheduled. It's not scheduled yet, the time.
And that's a three hour meeting, so we can make it
Also, you're, you're going to be, the, what's the time difference?
Two hours.
Two hours, so it would be two hours.
Ahead of you, so if you
So it'd be later for you.
Yeah, I would be out of the way of, you know. I mean, if you did it, I'll make it up. If you did it at 6 o'clock, I'd be 8 o'clock for me.
Correct.
3, I'd be 5.
Yeah. So the 2nd's still on, it's the May 10th one.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Let's get to that one.
The May 2nd, Gary will be online.
Okay.
Well, what time works for everybody so that I can schedule the
I'm, I can make it anytime during the day.
Yeah, whenever.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good.
If we did, you said if we did a 6:00 PM, is that, or?
No, he'll be two hours ahead of you.
What, what time would work best for you?
I don't really know, but just tell me what time you want to do it and I'll make it work.
I say we do it, if we could do earlier in the afternoon, just because like also staff too on a Friday night, I feel like it would be a little bit better. And then he's ahead, like a 3:00 PM?
It starts at 6 and it would go for a while.
Sorry, 3, it'd be 5.
We do maybe on a Friday at 4:00 PM, is, is that possible?
That works for me.
Friday 4.
It's May 2nd.
4 o'clock?
So are you just the Gary, 6 o'clock, right?
Yeah.
Right. It's 4 Pacific.
May 10th.
So let's
Yes.
So this is an all day thing, right?
Like It is, definitely will be. You'll, you'll have some
So we need a whole day that everybody's free.
Well, I think it depends on how many we interview too. I mean, the last time we did this, we interviewed two. And that was it.
I can see just from this list.
Maybe more.
Process question.
Curse of being successful.
Man, can I just follow up on that? So let's say we do have five candidates that would come in that we want to interview. Could we imagine a second round after that if we, okay. How does that differ from a typical interview? Would we want a presentation? Would we want a different type of, I'm just curious what, how you do that?
Typically, the, the first round, typically we'll do the first round. We start first, with the first candidate. And I, again, I'm saying typically at 8 o'clock in the morning. And then we'll, we'll go through early afternoon. And then we will have you decide, do you want a second round? And if so, with, with who? Because it won't be all of them. It'll be one or two generally. And we have them come back at that point. At that point, you, your questions will be really tailored to what they said in the first interview or something that you want to delve in deeper into. So and we'll do that on also on the same day.
I have a, sorry, another, we've kind of mannered, but I just, I want to follow up in terms, we have the three tiers you were talking about. Do you ever see kind of non-traditional candidates that show up on the screen? Someone who's maybe at a a university as a professor of education, or I think of when Janet DePaulitano became the president of the University of California. Do you, do you ever see that in pools like this? And if those are things you recommend?
Received a call last week from someone who's not your traditional candidate that was asking about this position. Yes.
And so you would probably give us some guidance on how to move forward if it's transferable, et cetera. Okay.
I would also say when we finalize the job description, it's going to have minimum requirements that we all agree on. That's going to be really clear. Those are the minimum requirements that we're looking for. And then if it's something, somebody that's just amazing, I would see that they bring them to us, but we would really need to, we're going to agree on those minimum requirements that we feel is needed for this district based on the feedback from the communities and affinity groups. So I really want us to make sure that we have the guardrails.
And and we have, we've had candidates from, out of state is very common. But out of the country, we've had Canadians. We've also had people that are working abroad that that apply.
My colleague, trustee Howard, has said that we'd like to really focus on someone from California.
Yes, yes, I.
You know, I would, I find it hard to believe that anybody that far afield would be a successful superintendent. I mean, there's so much that you have to know to be a superintendent, and you only learn that, there's two of them sitting over there. You only learn that from being in the battle for years. And I think someone coming from far afield would have trouble being able to be competitive. And we would have a hard time judging, I think, how to make them fit in. At least I would.
Can we get back to scheduling this? If we need a full, so we were saying we need a full day available? Okay, all right, so we're not all available on the 10th. We've said to a Sunday.
Can you do a Monday, Sarah? Is taking a day off work possible?
It depends on the Monday.
I I mean, I know that.
Oh.
There's somebody on the Monday. What about the Tuesday, the 13th? Oh.
Okay.
Um, does it, is, well, is it possible to push it sooner?
Yeah.
Put on like, like I'm looking at my calendar. I've got nothing on Thursday, the 8th, nothing at all.
I've got nothing. I will, I can move anything around for the 8th.
But Dolly, when are you back?
Uh, from the May thing? Oh, yeah, I'm back by May 1st.
So the 8th? Okay. No, Dolly, you said you were out on May 8th and May 9th as well.
Oh, okay.
For something?
8th and 9th, there might be like daily type things. Oh, um, May, I'm sorry, I have an IDP on May 8th that I can't move.
Is that, how long would that be, Dolly?
Um, it's, I believe it's till 12:15.
I don't mind starting late. I know that would be weird.
Could we potentially, and just throwing it out there, do you two evenings?
Yeah.
No, wait a minute. May 8th is really not a good day because there's also an AC SBA meeting as well. 6th to 8th, and the 9th is okay.
But I mean, could we skip that one?
Yeah.
Could we skip that one for this though, since it's so?
We could absolutely skip the AC.
She's gone also on the 9th, so.
Um, so we did the 7th. We're two clients on the 9th, I can't move that.
Okay.
Sorry, guys.
No, no, don't be sorry.
My whole May is actually like that. Yeah.
I'm feeling your stress, Sarah, because.
On this one.
I, it seems like if we were to push it after your vacation, like we're at graduation. I I I feel very strongly. I think we want this wrapped up by graduation, right?
Have to have it wrapped up.
You mentioned something that was cool, I think, two nights, and if we're both, or all of us are free, the evenings of the 6th and the 8th? Could we do that?
I don't think Dolly's back on the 6th.
No, she's back on the 1st.
Oh, God.
The 1st, it's not that long.
So.
Is the 7th?
We have a board meeting. We have an actual board meeting on the 7th.
Because I have in my last AXA delegate assembly and last AXA board meeting. I'm coming off the board. On the 8th and 9th.
Okay, what about the 6th and the 7th?
Not the 7th.
But we could move the.
We could move, we can move things around. Like, what if we do the afternoon? Like, I know.
Can't. I have court on the 7th. Oh, God. I've got court on the 6th. I'm sorry, you guys, my.
It's okay.
My May is a mess.
As a reminder to all of us, this is not a full-time job. We do this the best we can.
What about the 5th?
Yeah. You know, the the other issue that we're going to run into and and it doesn't involve Donald and I, it really involves our support. It'll be Penny. She needs time to put all of those materials together. And and it's not a matter of just duplicating. It's a matter of putting it together because it'll have candidates' names, it'll have candidates all their their information, the questions, et cetera. That's. Yeah.
Well, well, no, he's out. So, okay. I said no to Sunday, the 11th, but I can do Sunday, the 11th. I feel that that's a hard ask. Yes.
Sunday, the 11th? That would work for me.
It's Mother's Day.
Oh, gosh.
But I'll go, I'll do Mother's Day on Saturday.
If we could reach.
Looking at getting into trouble, right?
Yeah, I, if we could reach hard to see if we could break it up over two nights somehow. I.
There's a reason why we couldn't do like half, like, like one of those nights be the 8th and one be the 9th? We need to talk about those evenings. But lavender leaves when? I'm sorry.
I leave at 5:05 on a flight.
We do the 8th and the 11th, half and half?
I wouldn't, I could make that work.
8th is a Thursday, the 11th is Sunday.
When are you on your plane? On the 12th?
Leaving the 12th. So may I ask you, because you guys are consultants, I'm consulting with you on this question. Do you, I mean, do you think that we're doing, we we'd be doing our candidates a disservice to break it out?
Yeah.
Across multiple nights like that with like time in between? Or do you think?
This is, this is the issue that I see.
Better process to just do it all at once.
The issue that I see is they may be traveling, you know, you may get someone from Southern California or that is traveling, so they're coming up for the interview. And then you will want to have a second round. It's yes, just to to make sure if you're, you know, between one candidate or the other, or it might be three candidates that you think, oh, these are really tight. We need to hear them again, and we'd have to have those come back. And you wouldn't have heard. But let's say if we do two dates on the second day, you'll be hearing some for the first time. And then you may say, hmm, I want this person, we we really like this person from the first round, the first day to come. We won't know that. And so what what happens is we have them there.
Yeah, yeah.
And we tell them, you know, like.
Stand by the.
We'll hang out somewhere, you know, be 15 minutes away and then come in.
But we lose female candidates because it's our interview is on Mother's Day?
Well, we didn't decide on that yet.
Would it be?
Full day we have.
Would it be inappropriate if we have to do a second round with with folks to do that virtually? Would that be kind of against protocol?
It's, it's, uh, now, the second round, you could schedule the second round on another day. That's.
That's what I'm saying.
Could schedule the second round on another day.
So it would be a third day of interviews.
All of them on one, you want to see all of them, but again, those second round, people would have to come back on on that other day.
I'm going to ask one more thing. If we push out to Saturday, the 17th, we'd lose seven days.
Can't.
Is everybody back and fail? Oh, you can't do the 17th?
Can't do it, I'm sorry.
You know what?
But I can't.
You can't. Does the 12th work better for everyone? Is that?
I can, I can do the 12th.
Guys, I'll do the 12th.
I could do that.
You can do the 12th?
Yes. But I could do. Are you sure?
I'm sorry.
We're so sorry.
I don't want you to change the flight if that's an important day for you.
It's one day and.
Is that date specifically important to you to be anywhere?
Well.
I lost my mom and that being being with her on that date for me is important, so I want to make sure that that doesn't
Well.
mess things up for you. Okay.
So I'll just push it back.
Okay.
So I'll change that. And so we'll be fine.
Thank you, and I am so sorry to everybody. I ruined our schedule again. Yeah, okay.
And I just want to hear another consensus that that I want to, just want to confirm. We likely are going to have such a robust field that we're going to have like probably five candidates. Because we're doing it this way, were we to have a second round, it would happen that day?
Yes, it's a long day.
So that, like, in theory.
Second round would happen that day.
We will have a sense of who our, who our person is. Of course, we have to come to the next meeting to do that. Okay.
Yeah.
I think we're talking about sort of the worst case scenario here.
You will have a finalist on that day. You say, this is after everything that we've heard, this is the person that we want to bring forward.
Okay, on the 12th.
Because you know, the last time we did this, we met with the search firm on Friday evening. The candidates were in on Sunday and we made an oral offer Sunday night. Done.
And and you'll have that opportunity.
We were under pressure.
Yeah, you'll have that opportunity that.
We were in a lucky situation. But that's the best of all opportunities. We, now we're trying to bark, trying to figure out.
Can I hold this off our, to and let our speaker speak? Okay, so if Marissa Lopez Scott, would you come up here? You will have three minutes. Yes, please. There's, there'll be a clock, you can see.
Thank you for giving me a chance to speak, and I apologize. I'd submitted in advance. I didn't realize I needed to do the paper form. I'm Marissa Lopez Scott. I'm a mom to a current TK transitional kindergarten student at Chabot Elementary. And he is a student with an IEP. In my professional life, I've been a public interest attorney for children and youth for over 10 years. And my husband Jimbo Scott has a master's in social work and has extensive behavioral intervention training. With even our professional knowledge and experiences, we've had to fight at every phase to get our son qualified for an IEP and to get him appropriate services and support. We've met many families with similar stories about difficulties getting their children IEPs in this district to ensure that their children receive the free and appropriate public education faith that they're entitled to. All that said, parents of students receiving special education services should be specifically included in the list of stakeholders to provide input into the search for the new superintendent. While special education parents cut across a number of different stakeholder groups, parents of students receiving special education services have disproportionate amounts of contact with the district and its employees through assessments, IEP team meetings, and more. Thus, we'd ask that these parents be a crucial partner to help select the next leader of our district.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Lopez Scott.
Were they on the list?
Yeah, we added them. Yeah.
This is.
We did include those.
Yes.
Yeah, Michael was going to bring it up, and if you hadn't, I would have brought it up, so.
It's been brought up. Okay, so, sorry. The 12th is happening now. Thank you for your experience sharing us with with that. So where are we now? In terms of what we need to be talking about now?
And and we will need, just just so that you know, we will need a place that we will be interviewing them. We will need a place, a waiting room for them. And and so that, and it has to be a place where they can't see each other, you know, so that they can't see who's going into the interviews. Because we orchestrate a very delicate dance that day. We don't want the candidates to see each other. And we also don't want everybody to know because people are maybe putting their current position on the line at that point.
Sorry.
So what kind of locations have worked well for this in the past?
We've used kind of everything. We've used district office, but because it's during the workday, we've used, yes, hotels in in your attendance area.
I, I'm, if we didn't have it at the district, there is like the women's club or something like that that could rent.
We've used churches.
That's close by.
I'm wondering, though, we have facilities all throughout the district, Amy. You might know more of a place like that. What about, um, the what's the, oh, my gosh, my brain, the place that we rent out to Hard? That's near my house.
Adobe Center?
There's classes there and things like that.
There's really only one room there though, so you wouldn't.
And and you will also be there. We will, we will, we will be there all day, and so meals are going to be important, you know.
It sounds like we need like three rooms available to us.
Three rooms. We can do with with two, one where you're you're meeting and and interviewing, and then a waiting room for the candidates.
And in terms of staff support, would we, would Amy need to be there for us that day? And, okay.
Let's just do it at the conference room at Golf Land. That would be fun. That was a joke. They always, there's this big blast room where they want you to have birthday parties. I love it.
So, okay, so we'll get back, we'll get back to us. So one of the things, and we might, I have not. Like, once you've selected when it, your finalist, there's a validation process. And some districts, they do like want to see this person in their previous or their environment. And so you may schedule a week or a day to go visit them, stay there. After that, so you want to send, you might want to go over there and see them, and they will have a host of people for you to see. And you can take a team over there.
Is that something like the whole board would go to or what is that?
You could do either. Some or or all. You can also bring them to the district. And and then schedule different groups to come in and meet with them, talk to them. They can ask them, this is before they are appointed. This is, they're the finalists, you're onsite.
So this is after the interview process, where we have a
finalist.
Finalist that we're vetting, right? It says, we're making an offer to them, but it, we're, we still have a couple checks.
It's not over until you are at your regular board meeting and you approve them.
This validation process, it sounds sounds like like us go to check the references in person?
You're really not checking references.
I don't quite understand.
Just what makes you feel most comfortable before before finalizing the deal? Because in in that interim, your legal counsel and they are talking to make sure that everything on the agreement is that is in agreement.
So it sounds like.
Back and forth, you're negotiating the contract, so that's that's one piece that she was talking about. And the next piece is you might, and I've seen it done several different ways, but I've seen where. And the next piece is you might, and I've seen it done several different ways, but I've seen, um, where, um, like. Maybe one or two or could be all of you go to where they are. And we talked to quite a few people like the union, the barbealing, the student or whoever it is that you might want to talk to. And I've also seen it done where they might come here. And you could have a list of people that you might want them to talk to.
Um, it sounds like Gary, y'all didn't do this last time. Yeah.
We didn't do it last time, uh, but I re- I remember. And, uh, I'm sure Joe would remember better than I do.
I know she does.
Um, I think in the past, they had sent people out like a couple of board members to go visit, uh, a district. And report back and say yes or no or whatever.
This is my only.
Time to we don't need to decide that today. You just need to think about what that might look.
I'm intrigued by it, but I'm also. I I say this. Um, how do I want to say this? Um. This is a decision of this board period. Um, we are going to take stakeholder input absolutely serious. That's going to it's going to drive this process. I'm concerned once the cat's out of the bag, the consequences of that in some ways, whether it's from a negotiation point of view. Um, it sounds very, it sounds like it's a very collegial community of superintendents and. It sounds very nice that we could be able to go to someone's district and say, hey, what do you think of us poaching your superintendent? I I almost, but no, no, I just kind of want to. I I'm just sort of. I I don't, it's our decision, period. And I don't want to create noise. I don't want speculation. Uh, I don't want people thinking that just because this is our maybe candidate that they have the chance to stop what we're going to do or not do. You know what I mean?
To add to that, what I really liked about your presentation was your vetting process. I feel like you have the connections. I feel like that might muddy the waters going to wherever they're at. What if there's a miss and then something happens with their other job? I just. Uh, I want to respect their space, whoever they are, and focus on the vetting process of. Y'all have a community. You know, people, they know things. You do a heavy vetting process. You know, I think the the interview and all day interview coming to our site is a lot for someone already. And, you know, we're going to have a lot of community input pre us going. I I would feel more comfortable if. We we not do that.
And there are many districts that don't do a validation process.
I think we're also leaning towards not, but as you said a few minutes ago, we could change our mind later on.
You've got time. I mean, you've got plenty of time. Uh, we could, you could decide that after the interviews, you know.
I mean, if validation is having lunch with the board and sitting down and just talking about values and what things are going to look like, I think that that that's something I would be open to, but. I don't want it to be Jonestown or something like I don't. Yeah, no.
All right. So that's something you guys can let us know at a later time. Um, so the target date, um, that we have. Where the board will approve the con- contract for your superintendent would be May twelve, uh, May twenty first.
Yes.
Okay.
And then they begin July one.
We'll begin.
What does, um, that usually looks like in that sort of, I I mean, we have a fantastic superintendent who I know is going to, um, be very supportive in the transition. What are typically, is there a structured kind of handoff or what's the protocol around that? I'm curious.
Um, typically, um. The the incoming superintendent and and, uh, your retiring superintendent will talk about maybe some days that they might be able to. Uh, meet and and, um, so that person coming in would take. The time off, the days off at at their district and then come in and and meet with, uh, Dr. Amadi. And, uh, and talk about that. I will share with you that, uh, when I was transitioning out and the new superintendent was coming in, one of the things that. Worked really well for us, uh, was we had, uh, a little reception and it was just in the cafeteria of the high school. And we invited the community and and we had a window of maybe about two hours. Um, and I was there and the new superintendent was there and board members were there. And we just, I I was very deliberate in introducing him to the different groups because the message was. This is a very smooth transition. Um, you know, I am still going to be available. I'm going to help him be successful. Uh, there's no animosity here. It just made for the the message that it sent and it was almost like I'm having a party here to introduce him to. The our our educational partners and and, uh, we just had. I think cake and and punch or something like that. And and people drifted in and out and and had a chance to talk to him. It made it very, very comfortable for for everyone.
What's even better is if it has sherbet and the punch. I have a bunch. So that that's that's nice to hear that there's ways to sort of handle that.
But but that's something, uh, again, you know, it it's the messages that you are sending by your actions and. Um, and clearly, you know, that person will have tremendous support from from Parveen. And so, um. I I I think just signaling that, but also planning that time in in, uh, June, really. When they can do these things, because as you said, there's a lot going on during that period of time.
Yeah, I also suggest the board later talk about our rollout communication plan. So that's something that we'll have to decide together.
Right. And and that is also is, uh, very, uh, I call it a delicate dance because. Want to make sure that, uh, and we'll give you some sample press releases, but you want to make sure that. The press release goes out at each district at the same time. So both districts are getting the information at the same time, uh, that, uh, and typically staff gets the information first. Staff and parents get the information first. And so that goes out at the same time at both districts. So no one is saying. How come that other district got it a day before us? Are we not important? So there is that, and we call it the delicate dance because that has to be timed perfectly. So that it goes out at the same time and neither district feels like they were shorted. And we will talk about that also once the finalist is is, uh, identified.
So. If that would take place prior to the board meeting or after, because if we approve it, the board meeting is public.
It it would be prior and and you would only identify that individual as the finalist. Not the superintendent. They do not become the superintendent until you've appointed them.
Great.
So it the press release all talks about the the finalist. We have samples of all of that for you, so.
Thank you.
Well, where are we at seven now?
Yes.
We're at seven.
So, um, we we have already started as you've heard from us. Uh, and and when it goes out in print in edcal, people love to have it in hard copy. And so that we'll we'll get a lot of candidates. Uh, we we have no no doubt about that. And we don't think we'll have any problems and we've both had people already talk to us, uh, about the position. Um, the contract parameters worksheet is something that we will give to candidates that are the ones that you select for interview. We will give that to them in advance. We'll give them a copy and and, uh, Amy, if we can get a copy of the the last, uh. Contract for Dr. Omadi, then, um. We will, um, share that with them. We give them the contract parameters form so they see this is what the district has has offered in the past. Um, as far as contract days, et cetera.
Unfortunately, uh, Parveen is not a doctor. If we could confer an honorary doctor.
He's a doctor to me. I'm sorry. I'll confer her.
Maybe we can confer her an honorary something.
I think so. I'm sorry.
I will say, doesn't, I mean, because. An employment, uh, offers that I've made in corporate America, we've never provided. The compensation of the previous employee. What's the benefit of that?
It's a public document.
Yeah, it's public.
Never mind. Thank you.
It's already.
It's like on our website somewhere.
So, um, but the the purpose of that is that then you don't get people out in left field asking for something that. You know what? You didn't give it to your previous outstanding superintendent. The likelihood that you would give that to them is is slim. And so it it just keeps them, you know, parameters, it just keeps them within. What what reasonably you would be, uh, giving them. And most of them just pretty much go through and look at. Number of days that that for the work year, you know, what are the the, um, health and welfare benefits, those kinds of things, you know?
Do you know? There's usually some sort of, uh, words in there, something like commensurate with experience and so forth. I mean. Arvind's been a superintendent for thirteen years. So she, I mean, superintendents are well compensated and they should be, and. It's going to be a competitive market, but she's probably really high up.
Absolutely.
So we're keeping.
Green superintendent may be less.
Right. So, um, since it's not on here, but it's actually a part of this, when you're talking about the parameters, the contract parameters is just, you know, a salary range.
Yeah.
That we can put out. So, um, so I do have some comparables. And, um, and I don't know if they need to vote on it now or we can come back to it, but you know.
What what we can do is is, uh, because they can't vote on it now unless it's already in place.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, you, it has to be done at your regular board meeting. So you can have some conversation about what that might be. And then vote on that at your upcoming, uh, April board.
Can you send the comparables to us?
But for sake of discussion, as here, can't we discuss it now?
Yeah, can we just have a.
Because you can't vote on it, but yes.
But we can discuss it. We can hear from you now about those comparables.
So I have from last year's salary. And so just in Alameda, so I have Berkeley, so, uh, which is two eighty. Um, Alameda Unified, two ninety four. Uh, New Haven, two eighty four. Uh, and I just finished Vallejo, which was a year ago, it's two ninety six. And of course, you do have your current superintendent who's way at the other end because of course she has thirteen years. And that was three sixty eight. And I know Stan Lorenzo, um, is three, I think he was three fifty something.
Right. I I I mean, I I don't, I those are helpful benchmarks. One thing I remember when, um, Parveen joined us was. At first, there was like this ick factor that as a woman, maybe she wasn't being compensated appropriately, right? I I that I remember that was sort of a community reaction, uh, um, but clearly she she's she's been here and her 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 salaries increased. I think as a board, it's important that we talk about like this is the market, like this is. We are, we are, we are hiring someone who is an experienced educator. And I I think I want us to be prepared to really talk about what a superintendent salary means. And what that's all about. One thing I don't want to do, I don't want to play games honestly with. Um, uh, an allowance for like a car, an allowance for this or that. I just want it to be a salary. And and I don't know if if that's something we can discuss here, but I don't want it like I've seen other contracts and other superintendents in the state. No, you just. In a salary. But and I know that we've been very lucky with our superintendent in terms of some of the the costs that she doesn't take, uh, under her current contract as well.
Well, you're right, though. The if you look at, uh, you know, Roland Williams, the head of C V San, the head of. ARD, uh, all the city managers, they make, uh, you know.
A lot more.
In the same sort of range, uh. You know, I remember when we did this with the last time through, Parveen was was hired at less than Jim Nagri was making. Because at that time, Parveen had only been a superintendent for three years and Jim had been. I don't know, fifty or sixty years. I don't know, a long time. Uh, and so. The salaries were adjusted. You know, and she's been here ten years now and she's making a lot of money.
I think we also had something in her salary thing that it was a seven thousand dollar automatic plus the cola of what we. Gave to teachers, you know, sort of the me too part. So because, you know, she's part of, uh, the, um, executive cabinet or, you know, classified staff also. So I think we should take a look at that also because I think that had something to do with when. When there was kind of recessionary times, that seven thousand a year was sometimes a problem with upping the salary.
Also say that, you know, consistency with what our labor partners raises are, how are we considering that and thinking about that? Is something I'd like us to consider as well. So how do we align our superintendent with what our labor partners raises are?
Right.
Yeah, I would just say broadly speaking, I just don't want any weird shenanigans with expense accounts and stuff. I just want it to be. If you're going to work with Castor Valley Unified, you're going to get a salary. That's what you can get. I just, I've heard, I've seen other expense accounts in other districts. I just don't like it. And I think, you know, Jerry Brown famously talked about the psychic benefits of being a state worker, right? Um, I I think that we also need to remind our community partners that, um, you know, uh, a superintendent in California. Uh, they're not making as much as one would think, um, that they should be making possibly for for where they are. Um, what other expenses might be incurred? Like, is it typical to offer moving expenses, relocation expenses? I'm just curious.
Or is is in her current, uh, contract in in Arvind's contract is typically what they would be looking at.
There are a bunch of benefits in there, various things I've forgotten. Clearly, there's health insurance and.
Yeah, but.
Leadership and acts and things like that.
But like, so if we get a local, uh, candidate, like, we're not going to have to relocate them, but would do we? I'm just curious what our values are about relocation. Do we offer house assistance, you know? A low interest loan, like all those things. Do we worry about those things?
I would say that we would refer to the contract that we have now. I mean, I think that also from your research, there may be some. Benefit information from neighboring districts that we can compare with as well.
Mm hmm.
Right. Because I think it's the salary, the total compensation package and what that looks like.
So that was just salary?
Yeah.
And so there's other things, um, that they negotiated as well.
That's what makes it difficult to make direct comparisons because of exactly what you're talking about. There may be. Uh, number one, it doesn't say how many workdays, how many workdays in the year. We don't know that. It can be different according to to district. And and we'd have to pull the the contracts from those individual districts to know what all of those. Additional benefits are.
Well, I would just say we we want to compensate the person appropriately for the work that we're going to perform. So that will be obviously negotiation. I mean, but I hear what you're saying is in like. What's outside standard practice that they try to negotiate? Like, we do interest based bargaining. I think that that's what we should be doing as well as. We want to be open and honest about our parameters so that when they're applying. They have a good understanding of what they're applying for. And most likely, if it's somebody that we're willing to make an offer to. We probably won't get the shenanigans you're thinking about.
Yeah, I think one other comment I would make is that, you know, clearly the superintendent has to make the most, right? The boss. But, you know, if you look at our salary schedule here as I remember it, you know, the superintendent, the assistant hoops, the directors, the principals. There really is a ladder here and, uh, it is in my mind about right. You know, maybe it's not perfect, but it's pretty close to being right. All the way down to the teachers and clearly the the superintendent, the assistant superintendents, I think they probably work. Two hundred and twenty or whatever days a year. Parveen probably works three hundred and sixty five days a year. And our teachers work a hundred and eighty days a year, you know, so there is a difference there. Twelve employees.
So what we would need from you is that range for right now. And that you can vote on at your next board meeting. And, um, if you need me to send you some more things. What is it that you would like for me to send you?
I think it depends on the the candidate's experience, what our range would be.
Well, I mean, I listen, I could kind of make up a number, but it would be nice to have advice on what that range should be. We can consult about it and then say, okay, here's our range.
So maybe do is provide a spreadsheet with all the surrounding, maybe the surrounding differences.
I know that Superintendent Amadi has a lot of that data that you're asking for, so she can provide it. There's been a lot of. provide it. There's been a lot of conversation in the surrounding.
In the county.
Districts.
Excellent.
Of what everybody's making, so.
Right.
Yeah.
So we can share that with you and, and, uh, that way you have an idea of what that is. And maybe if we can also, um, share with the, the board, uh, her contract, so that you can see what is in there, um, ahead of time as well as.
And we have said her contract before.
Yeah.
We should all have it, but I think in the package, we can have a.
Let's send it again.
Review it.
And send, could you send it to us as well? Because any of the, well, the finalists is definitely going to want to see what she has in her contract. So, um, any more discussion around this?
Any other questions?
I'm happy we had the conversation.
Great. Um, so that brings us to ten board questions before we go into the input. Moving right along.
We are. So in addition to what you identified in the, the profile, um, what other qualities, are there any other qualities or characteristics or, um, skills, experiences that you would like to see in the next superintendent?
I have a few that I.
Uh, before we do that, could we just state with the key, can, do you mind if I state for the audience with the key things we've already listed? I just want to be really.
Please do, please do. That's, that's wonderful.
So one thing, so we got together as a board and we did have this conversation already to kind of set this process up for success with a baseline before we talked to the community. Um, and the key responsibilities based on our current district and where we are and where we're heading, um, is building a rigorous learning environment is a key factor, key responsibility for us. Leading by example, um, we know that the superintendent sets the tone for the district, so we really want to ensure that they lead by example. Um, they have equity-driven leadership, that they, um, have, um, good public relations and community engagement. Um, we have a very involved community. We want to make sure everyone is heard. We want to make, you know, that experience, um, fiscal responsibility. Um, we are not fully funded in California the way that we feel that we should be. Um, and we, we want to make sure that our resources are managed appropriately so that we can get the best for our kids. Um, inspirational leadership and organizational culture. You know, most people don't get into this job unless they really care. Um, but we do face adversity and hard times and we go through stuff. And so we really want to make sure that that person can help lead through inspiration and drive a positive organizational culture. We want this person to have strong conflict resolution and diplomacy. Um, it's very important that all lenses are heard and how they respond to our community, teacher staff is in a diplomatic way that takes into account those things. So those are some of the key, high-level things that we talked about. Um, and then we, we talked about some.
So let me go back. We'll lead by example. We'll have equity-driven leadership qualities, has public engagement experience, has strong financial background, is inspirational and.
I wouldn't say strong financial background, but they, they can be fiscally responsible.
Is fiscally responsible.
Is fiscally responsible.
Because oftentimes, we're not seeing a CBO that's coming through the ranks, right? Yeah. But someone who's worked well with a CBO and gets the funding challenges, someone who can go talk to the governor about basically Parveen two point O.
Yeah, on, on that particular thing, you know, we are, um, although we are a growing district and many applicants may think this is an easy job to have or do, um, we're still in a tight budget. We don't get a bunch of, you know, we don't get the title, very much Title I money. We don't have a high duplicated, uh, count. And so we work on a very tight budget. And somebody who knows how to navigate that would be good for us.
I'd like to talk about storytelling, like tell the story of our district, um, being, being an effective, yeah, that's a component of communication. But I think telling the story of Castor Valley Unified, so that it becomes the story of Castor Valley as well, uh, would be really helpful. And I'd like to see more attention to that going forward. Um, you know, I think of, uh, the empathy that, that Parveen has, and I, I don't know if this is like a litmus test, but can your superintendent sit down with a bunch of first graders and read a book to them? I almost want, I wish that could be sort of a test that we could do. But that just type of connection with your students at the end of the day, um, is that someone who's going to just be an active, sort of listening to that community or our student community always?
I like to think about, um, people who approach problem solving in collaborative and creative ways. Um, and maybe, I think this falls under that umbrella, also not always approaching everything with a hammer. Yeah, every nail doesn't need to be hit with a hammer. Um, and I think that probably plays well with, you know, these ideas of like, someone who can create community and can like tell the story of the district and sit down with first graders, for instance. So like, yeah, I'm how do, how do we, how do we approach problem solving? Um, what is, what is, what is her, what is, what is this person's style, you know, when confronted with not just problems, but with, um, severe opposition, which, you know, may come from time to time. Um, I'm not sure how to disseminate that until, or with, um, that creative problem solver.
I, I was going to hit on like three specific things that have, uh, in the past, been issues have come up in the district or are current or whatnot. That's equitable grading slash ethnic studies, SROs, and are, um, of course, pro LGBTQ plus, um, stance in the district. So like, a person who had, um, a strong background in what equitable grading is, you know, would be very good for us, as well as, um, ethnic studies, uh, too, just being implemented and, um, has a position on SROs as well. And, uh, I mean, you could see there are flag in the back here with LGBTQ. This is a couple of years ago, but when we put those up, we had some, you know.
I would like to add.
SRO, what's, what is that?
Uh, the School Resource Office.
School Resource. I thought so, but I was like, I'm waiting to make sure.
So what I, what I would like to add on to that and tag on to that is social and emotional supports. I think that the position in our district has, has been that we want to support kids with positive interventions. And so it's really important for us to continue that work in our district.
I have an addition as well. Um, I tend to look away from specific policy prescriptions and more about, um, some of the comments we've heard over the past year or so about SROs. It's not that often, it's coming from a small subset of the community. I think what I want to know is our superintendent is able to build bridges, where maybe it's not obvious to build a bridge. Um, I, I know, for example, we have a fantastic sheriff who wants to be a partner with this district. And I speak with her all the time about how we might not have SROs, but we're going to have a deep relationship with you. So someone who's willing to sort of look beyond sort of this binary way of fighting that we see in social media and kind of in our country and our communities, is someone more who's willing to kind of come up with new ways of connection. That was such a Michael Kuziak thing to say.
So can build bridges with community partners and?
Yeah, and maybe not so obvious partners, right? Um, finding a connection where maybe it doesn't seem like it's going. And I think Parveen really has a gift for that in a lot of ways. I do think sometimes the narrative, um, because of just how social media works and other things work, we kind of lose the, the fight, we lose the story at times, which really frustrates me because I know, I know, for example, what we're doing in our schools to, to have safety for our kids. And we see safety in a much broader way than a very specific thing. So all I'm just saying is I, I don't want us to get caught up on, um, being against something or for something and more sort of a bridge builder.
Yeah, I, I think your, your idea there about, although we do not have SROs, but we are very friendly with the sheriff's department. And that would be nice to maintain and have that relationship continue.
I have one to throw in here, and I want to expand on what Dolly said a second ago. You know, uh, you mentioned equitable grading or standards-based grading. And I, what, the one thing, or one of the things that I liked about Parveen a lot was that she was not stuck in the past, and that she was really sort of on the forefront of what education should be in the twenty-first century. And, you know, that when we originally hired her ten years ago, that was actually what we were looking for, was somebody who could bring us out of the twentieth century and into this century. And I think she's done that in several different ways. And I hope that we, whoever comes in next would have that same, uh, being able to apply sort of the theoretical side of where education should be going. I mean, the things we're doing now, we should have done fifty years ago, but we didn't. So, uh, that kind of thinking into the future and not being stuck the way we did it for so long.
I'll also add to that, science-based education, based on fact and the most recent data, like, um, we want to innovate, but we want to make sure that we're, we've got good data to support and that we're teaching kids facts, right? And, and again, I'll just point to our strategic directions up here, someone that espouses those values.
I approve of what you said, but you don't need my approval, because I think you're empowered.
No, I was just saying, you used to say that when you were present all the time, and you pointed it out. So I was, I was doing a Michael.
Doing a Mike, yeah.
Um, I mean, speaking of the strategic directions, like, and not dwelling in the past, we've done so much incredible work under those strategic directions, you know, here in this district. And I would, um, I, I, and I think this is probably already in our bullet points that, that we, we've shared with you guys, but I just think it's really going to be a big priority, um, that whoever we choose can really embrace where we are with our strategic directions. Doesn't mean we have to stay in them exactly as we are, but how do we grow, you know, from that place and, and, and continue this kind of work, um, into, you know, to your point, Gary, the next generation of, of, of students, um, you know, here in Castor Valley.
And, and another thing about our district, um, related to, I guess, the SRO security thing, is, and somebody sort of mentioned it, but we have, uh, you know, we have a very strong mental health, um, uh, program here for kids. We have a, you know, mental health, uh, center really for the kids at the high school. And we have eleven social workers around the district. So somebody, um, also who would, um, be supportive of all that, and some work in that area would be good.
Also want to say, you know, um, one thing is lots of people have opinions, um, and what we sometimes face from certain people is hate, right? There is hate that is shared. The superintendent faces a lot of that, the superintendent's the top of that. How to be able to, um, again, it takes a lot of diplomacy and stand up for the right things.
Know your moral compass even despite the pressure. I think we find ourselves in that moment right now. And I've been inspired by Parveen's, uh, continued moral compass, unlike many university leaders in this country right now, um, with, with faced with being, being told to make a choice. And I don't doubt that this, this, our institution, our Castor Valley Unified School District would do the right thing by students right now.
Yes, the ability to advocate in the face of that kind of opposition.
Oftentimes, that's the challenge, like, I, um, with, it's one thing to bring people, you have to bring people along, right? Um, and I, I'd say some of the tension points we often find is once we're outside of the bubble of our school district. And we're talking to community stakeholders and they're, it's like, oh my God, that's a controversy. I mean, no, it's not. Um, it's what's right. And, but I think we have to challenge ourselves not to be arrogant and challenge ourselves to bring them along. Um, Parveen's patience with like the haters is just amazing to me. I have sat in meetings where she's been disrespected, where I've wanted to like, do a Jerry Springer style, like anger, like I've just been very upset. Um, and I just, that, that diplomacy is something that I admire about her, but it really angers me that, that she has to do that. So, um, this, I don't know, I'm just babbling, but that's the, we're in. And like, like, that's probably every superintendent in California, honestly. They have to deal with that. Lots of different stakeholders all the time.
You probably think we want the sun and the moon and the stars here, but we have been spoiled for the last ten years.
Yes.
Don't ask.
This is going to be tough to.
Get any of those. I mean, that's why it, we want this list because, you know, also when, when we receive the input of your educational partners, then we will hone that down, we'll summarize that and hone that down. Um, but you want these things. These, these are important to you. And it also helps some people self, uh, you know, pull themselves out because they may not be able to, to meet some of those knowing, you know, hmm, it's more than I'm.
Well, I know that, you know, Dolly, Sarah and I went to CSBA, and you realize there's a bigger world than the Bay Area. There's a bigger world in Castor Valley. And I'm sure that, that, you know, there will be self-selection as well.
Exactly.
But I'll be honest with you, I, I'm always willing to challenge myself. Um, I don't want anyone to feel unwelcome in our district. I think like those strategic values are about welcoming all, and even challenging ourselves to maybe a candidate who might not seem to fit, but like, might have the right attitude to, to, to just, just blossom, so.
And, uh, I, I will just say, your website reflects that. It, it really reflects that well. And so I, I think it communicates that to anyone. And any, any candidate who's worth their weight is going to go through your website and any of your documents. They will be looking at your budgets, your LCAP, yes, any, any report that has been done, they will be taking a look at that so that they have a good feel for what they're potentially.
We're happy to have them look at all that. I think that, you know, I think they'll find that, uh, our act is together, I think. You know, our budget is balanced, honestly, and we're not the richest, we're the poorest district in the, in the county for sure. We have the lowest per capita funding of any district in Alameda County. And, uh.
One of the lowest rates of administrative costs.
And we're probably one of the most financially stable districts, I think, because we're sane, I think, and stable. I think those are.
This should go without saying, but I just want to put it out there, student-focused, child-centered.
I hate to go back to this, but as we're, as you said that, and we're talking about this, are there any models of really reaching out to students and sort of stakeholder? I know we're gonna, we're gonna have, like, yeah, yeah, I know that there's that, the district student, the Student Leadership Alliance. Are there other ways of like connecting with elementary school populations? And is that inappropriate?
I would not for elementary. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I think that we've got a good representation.
Okay, okay, okay.
I think we're got, great idea. I don't want to.
Thanks, laugh.
But I just, it, that's a lot of work to do in the timeframe that we have.
I want like students to like, in, you know, finger paints, tell us what they want in their next superintendent.
If you want to interpret that.
That would be great.
Your committee.
Comment.
Yeah, or they could do handprints.
With that. With that, and, and, you know, we've had districts that especially with their high school, we worked with a, it's a high school district, but they actually have middle school and high school and they gave that link to their students and we got a lot, a lot of information. Don't take away our cell phones, that was one that they heard clearly, but, but there was a lot of really good information that came out and that certainly can be done.
We just sent a child nutrition survey to middle school and high school students and got a great turnout. So I would definitely say we could send this link out to the middle school and high school students so that we can get that student voice as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I know that we work with the leadership teachers sometimes, so that might be an opportunity as well.
Right. And we can break that down so that you can see this is student data. Because honestly, I worked with another district and met with their, actually I met with their third graders, fourth and fifth graders together, representative groups, and sixth, seventh and eighth graders. And if you looked at the responses from the sixth, seventh and eighth graders, you could not tell them apart from the adults. They were that sophisticated, I mean, that really deep thinking on the students. I think, I think they had some insight that wasn't previously shared, yes.
Middle schoolers, middle schoolers are really underrated in terms of their maturity. Middle schoolers are very underrated in terms of their maturity and they look like goof offs when you see them in town, but.
Three booms for you trustee Raymond, I agree with you.
They're smart.
They are and they are so observant, so they saw some things that other groups did not bring out, that the adults did not bring up, but very, very insightful. I was impressed, in fact, I said to the board, when you read, you know, look at that group and tell me if you could have, if I didn't have on there, you know, sixth, seventh and eighth graders, could you have guessed that that's where that data came from?
They're right at the cusp of being from like pure childhood to the responsibility of being a high school student and really, and I think that they take that very seriously and I, I mean, in full disclosure, the board and Amy on it is like, I have an eighth grader at home. But the emotional changes in middle school, I think, I think create these kids who really are paying attention to adults in ways we don't realize until we stop and ask them questions and really listen. So I mean, I think it's a great idea to send the links to the middle schoolers and to the high schoolers and have them take the time to think about this a little bit.
Alas, my youngest is still upset that every time he sees the superintendent, she still has not gotten his strawberry milk. That's been his one piece of advice over the past few years, every time he sees her. Where's the strawberry milk superintendent?
I did get more minimum, from the third graders, more minimum days, please.
I wanted to, are we on the strengths and challenges yet?
Strengths, yeah.
Okay. I wanted to put in a couple of strengths we have. You probably can tell we have a cohesive, high-functioning board. I would think that that would be attractive to a bunch of people who are applying for us. We don't agree, of course, on everything, but we, if we don't, we're doing that in, you know, back behind the scenes, not in public. Like, I mean, I work for Hayward Unified and, you know, I know of a bunch of people, you know, in other districts, Fremont and whatnot, and those boards sometimes are not functioning well, what ours is. The other great thing that we have that you couldn't tell from looking at our board, but we have a very diverse student body. The student body is more diverse than even voting adults. And so I would say that that is a real strength, but it may not be obvious to people, especially if they're interviewing with us. Some challenges, I think I mentioned this before, but although we're a growing district, we have a tight budget. So that is something that people should know, even though we are running in the black as we should be, we have our, you know, reserves we're supposed to have, but it isn't an easy thing and, you know, we're not going to have like, you know, that extra $3,000, for instance, that like Hayward Unified has for every student. We don't have that and we can't have all those kinds of programs and things running that maybe they, some other superintendents might be used to. Some other strengths, challenges?
Just to sort of dovetail on the financial piece of our challenge here in Castor Valley. And Mike, you had mentioned earlier that we are an unincorporated community or we're part of an unincorporated community. I think that that does present unique challenges. And I think that those challenges though also sort of have a role in creating the, or not creating, but they have a role in our schools being looked at as, you know, and our school district being looked at as, you know, a body that really makes a lot of decisions that impact our community in ways that maybe they don't necessarily in other communities. You know, we don't have, we don't have a city council, we don't have a mayor, you know, we have a school board, we have a sanitary district board. Those are the elected officials making decisions that are directly relevant to our communities.
A lot of special districts.
Yeah, and I think that that, that creates a unique kind of environment to add another leader to, you know, and so the superintendent and that leadership role, you know, the schools really are a huge piece of how the community feels and operates. And so, you know, when we say, let's bring the ambassadors in to talk to, let's talk about having someone who really is a good community builder, these things all play together, right, in terms of challenges. But that's also a strength because it allows us, I think, to have these sort of community building conversations and the partnerships that we have with, you know, Hard or with, I'll stop because Gary wants to talk.
Gary started.
Well, I have a couple, this is just a laundry list of things, you know, I think somebody mentioned, you know, that we are very diverse, we're, is it majority minority or minority majority, I never remember which way it is, but I think our largest group here is Asians and they're 30%. So we're really extremely heterogeneous group. And, you know, skipping over to another topic is I think one thing that, that I've always thought differentiates Castor Valley from some of our other districts, oh, and getting back to our demographics, one last thought is we have stable enrollment. We are not in declining enrollment, okay? As long as we have districts that are perceived as not doing as well as Castor Valley, we are able to maintain our enrollment at a level amount. So, and then to get back to the other thing that I think differentiates us is the culture here and among the administrative staff certainly, and even among the teachers, is one of work. They come to work every day and because of that, I think we are usually ahead of a lot of people, not we, but you know, the folks here, whenever there's a possibility of a grant or anything like that, they leap upon it and, you know, or when we turn in the LCAP and so forth, the county usually says it's the model for the county. So those kinds of things where people work every day and what I've heard in other districts around here is that is not the case. People come to work and drink coffee and so they don't get things done. And finally, I would like to say, we've worked really hard, it isn't perfect, but we've worked really hard over the last 10 years to build a really good working relationship with our bargaining units. And so I think they trust the numbers that we have, our CBO is outstanding and they just trust her. We trust her. And so I think there's those kinds of things and that wasn't always true. We did in the past have some acrimony with the bargaining units, but it's, it's never going to be perfect because there is obviously somewhat of a contentious.
They're bargaining.
Anyway, those are my thoughts. Those are strengths.
I think for me, yes, and on top of all that, because I agree with everything they all said, is with our diversity, we have 56 languages spoken in our community and then we also have this amazing adult school in our district that fosters, you know, helping our community beyond just our school age and helping out the community in a lot of different ways. That's very sought after for the programs that they teach. So we're really lucky in our district to have something like that that other people come to. We also have an amazing alternative school and Roy Johnson at Redwood High School where we really help lift kids up and give them individualized attention when they need it the most. And so it's like a really special place to be able to, when we say all means all, it's the people within our community that need services and support and education from the littles to those that are into adulthood.
I think a hallmark of our district of strength really is we have a model of neighborhood elementary schools for the most part, particularly on the west side of Castor Valley where they're walkable, they define your neighborhoods, your connections for like your, a lifetime. You meet so many kids in Castor Valley who remember who they were in kindergarten with and they graduate in Castor Valley High School, they come back, they take pictures in front of their elementary schools. I think that is even stronger than maybe even a place like Alameda and others kind of desirable districts. It really is something special in Castor Valley. I think we are a less segregated community than people might imagine it to be and you see it demographically and where people live, our neighborhoods for the most part are very integrated with socio-economically, by race, by background, same-sex couples, multi-generational families. I just think of Carmel Drive where I live and there's just a whole lot of everything there and you just don't see that same type of, even though we're in California and we like to imagine, oh, we're the smelting pot, you do see segregated neighborhoods in many ways in California, unlike Castor Valley, I would say, in a lot of ways, which is a strength. One thing, I, I think this is a failure of California, but it's something where a district can try to lead itself and, you know, Gary has pointed this out, I think our infrastructure is not in the best place, it's horrible. And I mean, I say this, I love, I love our schools, it saddens me to see the state of our schools after we've spent all this money on a bond measure and we need to renew our schools, period. But that's, I think, a broader statewide issue, but in the interim, where we really need a leader come in and Parveen did this quite well, when she came in and quickly we did the bond measure, we need to talk about parcel tax, we need to talk about another bond measure, we probably even need to think about something bigger than that and see, are there creative ways to rebuild our high school? We know, just speaking to community members, our high school's probably too big in terms, but that's typical for most California districts in the model that we have because of Prop 13. But I think we need to be creative about how we think about that. I always say that we have an inequity with our two middle schools and I know that we want to maybe address that in some way, some creative ways going forward, but a lot of the success of Castor Valley is built on the inequity of our, fundamentally of how things work in California. But I think if we want to really solve that problem, we need to look at the middle school issue and not tolerate having two different communities essentially that self-select. So my concerns are about infrastructure. I think there's an opportunity, that disconnect between the broader community that doesn't understand how schools work and our school community that's profoundly diverse, is poorer, is browner, is from many more backgrounds than sort of that, that kind of older Castor Valley. I think that's, that's a divide we need to somehow figure out because if we want that parcel tax, if we want that bond measure, we're going to have to figure that out.
Yeah, that's a good point and I was going to bring that up in a second and you beat me to it, but you did a good job on describing it and that, just to expand on it slightly more, we're in a brick and mortar building now and we have some on every campus, but our brick and mortar buildings here are probably 75 years old and more and we have a lot of portables and so forth that have to be swapped out. And the community's been very generous to us with bonds, a little less generous than with parcel tax, but generous with bonds, but there's a, there really is a limit to the bond indebtedness that a community like Castor Valley can bear. And we're not there yet, but it's something we need to have to keep an eye on. And so I think this is going to be an issue, you know, the next superintendent is probably going to be, probably not going to be Parveen and that person's probably going to be here five or six years, I would assume on average and, but it's something that they are going to have to think about in terms of plotting the future of the district and how we're going to deal with that kind of stuff. We're basically landlocked here, you know, we can't expand out like Dublin or Fremont. So the only place we have to go is up, you know, so there's a lot of thought around that.
Lavender.
I'll just say that this is every school district's challenge. No, I'm talking about something else, but there are a lot of legal things that you can't talk about outside of certain spaces because it's the law. And so there's always a challenge of community members wanting to know things that it's just not appropriate to share about our kids. So really someone that understands, you know, it's a challenge that we face, I mean, we're going to continue to face legal challenges, we're going to continue to face things that go bad, wrong, there's conflict, kids go through stuff, I mean, there's stuff. And so that's a challenge, I think, that we all face, all school districts face, but knowing that that's there and that it needs to be handled legally and appropriately is very important.
I, well.
Wait, yes, go ahead.
I think on that note, Lavender, I don't know how we work this into what we're putting together right now, but I, and Mike, maybe you're about to say what I'm thinking, I'm saying, which is that something that would be so lovely to have here is someone who's willing to maybe have like someone who's actually a public information officer who really is trained in talking with the media, you know, or talking about public relations, things that may come up from time to time. Not saying that like we are abnormal in this department or anything like that, I'm sure every district has their things that come up and how we, how we communicate or don't communicate speaks volumes and people read a lot into what we choose to share or not share and or how we do it. So I have at times thought there are maybe ways we can do that differently from how we do it, that obviously still, you know, adhere to what we are legally allowed or not allowed to do, but maybe pave smoother communication with our communities. I also just wanted to add a couple other things. Lavender mentioned our adult school and our alternative school, but I also want to mention that we have, we have a preschool, we have, we are a part of a ROP program with neighboring districts, which is really wonderful. We have a DLI program going strong in one of our elementary schools. DLI, yeah, yeah, and, yeah. DLI.
Dual language.
Yeah. And I think that those are really cool programs, all of them, and not all districts offer those things. I mentioned that, yeah, the preschool, yeah. And then I also wanted to say, one of our challenges, I think, is that there are definitely families who are concerned that at the high school, there aren't enough opportunities for students who are on the higher achieving end and how do we, how do we maximize opportunities for both ends of our academic spectrum? So that's, that's a growth opportunity area.
Well, can I just add that we also have a virtual academy as well, so.
And a hybrid in-person virtual school, like our, yeah, it's accredited. So our offerings to students in terms of how they can actually accomplish an education, whether it's like a traditional. whether it's like a traditional high school, an alternative high school, an online high school, a mix of the two or three is really incredible. Our kids have a lot of options available to them.
Yeah, I mean, the virtual academy saved us during COVID, right? Because we already had it. It would be great to be more creative going forward about, I don't necessarily, as the father of a Castro Valley High School student, I don't think that we know how to have the talk with our kids about, hey, have you thought about virtual filling in this gap or augment your schedule or whatever? I just wanted to add to the unincorporated issue, and we saw this during COVID, right? Because we are unincorporated, the county deprioritized our community. Their efforts in COVID response were to poor communities in Alameda County. That meant that our, we, the school district, stepped in to provide COVID testing, and it was open to the entire community. We oftentimes have to step up and provide other wraparound services. Yeah, like the health center, we have a health center, but we often step up in sort of to fill the gaps that, because we don't have a municipal government here, and we have, we're almost like a special social welfare agency. You know, Parveen's been really proactive with our food pantry program, and even at the elementary school, some of the additional things. I think it's important to remember, just because this is quasi-suburbia, we're kind of like in the middle, we have poor families here, right? We have homeless families here. And I think oftentimes that gets whitewashed in how people imagine this community, and it's important that's heard.
It is a sore point about ARPA funds, because, you know, for example, my favorite is Berkeley got $66 million in ARPA funds, and we got a hearty handshake.
We also have.
Go ahead.
Sorry. We also have a CV MAC here, which is just an advisory board. It is mostly peopled by business owners and/or ranchers and folks that tend to be more bent on the conservative side of town, more so than the town is itself. Castro Valley MAC Municipal Advisory Council. It, the people are appointed by Nate Miley. Our super.
Municipal.
It's as close as we have to a city council, but its rulings are not.
Land use planning.
And it's not elected.
Yeah, it's appointed, they're appointed by Nate Miley. And that's what? Alameda County.
No.
I would say that it's been a challenge, challenge. Please move it to, yeah, challenge.
It goes to the broader disconnect issue.
I think this is part, again, of the unincorporated community issue, you know, and being a skillful, you know, community builder, you know, within it, because we have like the MAC, which again is, they don't make binding decisions, they're not an elected body, but they want us to, they want the board, not the board, they want our superintendent to present, you know, to them and take questions, for instance, that sort of thing. I also just, so I think what Mike, though, one of the things you were trying to get to that you didn't say is that we, as a district, we start to fill sort of social service void because of, because of where we rank, you know, in the county, in terms of how do services get distributed throughout the county. And one of the things that we have, which I think is a benefit or a strength, is we have a partnership with a local healthcare agency, Tiberio Vasquez, and we actually have a health clinic that is on the campus of our high school that's open, not just to our students, but to the community as well. And it's a full health clinic. And I think that's a great partnership and offering to our community.
I was just going to say this out loud, because I feel like I've said it somewhere, but I would love, maybe this is a task for the new superintendent, I don't think our actual budget captures that part of what we do. Our sort of, that, all the other things that we are collecting, services we're collecting, the pat, literally the passing around the hat at times to support community members, to see that impact of those investments. But that's kind of off topic, but I'm just saying that out loud.
Sounds like something for a budget committee.
Yes. Social impact budget.
Any other strengths and challenges people want to bring up?
I do want to mention, you know, we have, you know, we talk about our affinity groups and our, the current, and all the folks you'll be reaching out to, we've built relationships with community members, and we've tried to do our best. I think that, you know, a lot of that started around the pandemic, where we didn't have access, we needed to get to people, but the work that we've done to really reach out, I mean, you can always do more work, right? But I do want to say, I do think it is a strength, how we're working with our communities and how enriching it has been to our district and our students.
I would add sort of a general livability challenge to Castro Valley. Livability, this is, you know, we've seen improvements with getting access to our schools, sidewalks, sidewalk is sort of a litmus test in Castro Valley of whether or not you want growth or not, or whatever. But we've seen some infrastructure investments. I would, having a leader who's able, and Parveen is actually pretty remarkable in how she works with the county, and I think it speaks more about the county than anything else, but those sustained investments in safety and livability in our community is important because there's a safety issue. It's about having conversations about the higher corridor with the county and how that impacts traffic and how it impacts safety of kids walking around that corridor. We have, that's, a lot of that's come from community activists, and I think that is a strength of our district. We have pockets of activists in different areas that have popped up over time to support those initiatives. I would just say, lastly, the challenge I would see, and this is probably any California district, teachers can't live here, our staff can't live here, what are we going to do about it? Like, we need to, we need, some people just say, you just pay them as much as you can. I think we have a responsibility to think about, under the umbrella of livability, what are we doing in partnership with other government agencies to ensure that our children can live here when they grow up, and so that even our staff and teachers can live here?
Lavender.
One challenge that I do want to mention, and I know it's something that we've talked about a lot recently, is federal challenges? Federal?
Federal. You know about that.
And how to navigate that in the coming years. That's all I'm going to say to that.
Yeah. And Gary?
Well, you know, we've gone through a lot of things here, but one thing that I, I want to go back to us for a second. And I think that, you know, I'm going to brag for a second, but I think this, I think this is a strength that a superintendent might appreciate, and that is, I think, we as a board here have tried to do what we believe is the right thing, no matter how sometimes unpopular it was. And over the past years, we have taken a certain number of beatings here. Certainly the pandemic, you know, don't close the schools, open the schools, ethnic studies, the pride flags, the school resource officers, the, you know, but I think we have always tried to do what we thought was the right thing, and we have stuck together through thick and thin. And I think that, I feel very good about that. I think we've done the right thing. I don't think we've made a mistake in that so far. We had a great superintendent to give us guidance, that's for sure, but we stuck it out. And, you know, it's sort of hard sometimes when you, when you get hate mail from Europe and Canada and all over the US and.
It's about us.
It's getting on time.
Okay. Okay. So the one last thing I'll say to what Gary said is, to add to what we do as a board, I know a lot of boards make agreements on an annual basis, but we really try to live to them, and we have healthy conversations to hold each other accountable. I know that people will look at me and say, yeah, I know, Lavender, you know, but, but we do it because we care about each other and because we want to lead by example. And I really appreciate when people say stuff to me, too. So it's like, we have a really healthy, psychologically safe board, and we try to do that with our teams and folks as well. And people feel safe coming to us in the district, staff, teachers, because we create that environment, and that's something that we want to continue to ensure, that people feel safe to share what's on their mind, and that, you know, even if, you know, we can be accountable, too, right? Everyone makes mistakes, and so we really do, as a board, hold each other to those commitments.
And the great thing about that is that you set the example for everyone else, all the way down to the kids. As it should be, as it should be.
Okay, so, looks like we don't have financial staffing. We do need to vote then on this timeline now.
I'll move that we approve the schedule as we amended it.
As amended.
Sorry, just to clarify, it's both the schedule, which I know we marked up, but also the stakeholder groups with, I know you've noted. Were there any other things that we really kind of made some dates in the groups? Okay. I'd second that.
Okay. So vote for both the schedule and for the input on community partners. Trustee Kuziak. Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
And I also vote yes, that's five zero, we have our timeline and our community forum.
Then we just need a few minutes with you in closed session.
Okay. We will go to closed session now. Okay. We'll go to closed session now. Okay, we are closing the meeting for the today's special meeting. Oh, yes, we took action, we voted on both our, whatever. Oh, okay. No action was taken in closed session. Thank you. Close now.